Good evening and welcome to the Fort Smith City Board of Directors Meeting. This is May 6th of 2025. Keep in mind, these meetings are being televised live for the benefit of our residents who cannot be with us in person. Okay, at this time, I'm going to ask Director Neil Martin to do the invocation for us, if you don't mind. Okay, and since Director Settle is already standing, we'll ask him to do the pledge for us.
Let's pray. Father, what an opportunity it is tonight to be here. We're thankful for all those that are in this room that are taking part in the business of this city. And, Father, we pray that you would be with each and every one of us tonight, the Lord, that we would honor you in our words, or the way we speak to each other. Father, we just pray for civility and respect amongst the board, amongst the citizens. Lord, we love you and we want to reflect your character as much as we can. Lord, I pray that you would be with us tonight as we make decisions about our city. Lord, I pray that everything that we do is for the betterment of the city of Fort Smith. Lord, I pray that we would honor you and the decisions that we make and the decisions are pleasing to you. We pray that you be with those that come to speak to the board, fill them with wisdom. And, Lord, I pray that we just come together, unified, to make our city the best as it can possibly be, Father. So, we just ask your presence tonight. We ask you to move amongst us. Lord, we ask all these things in your precious and holy name. Amen.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. This time, Madam Clerk, if you would, please call the roll.
Directors Rego.
Here.
Good.
Here.
Kemp.
Here.
George Kitzavas.
Here.
Christina Kitzavas.
Here.
Settle.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Okay. Thank you very much. This time, I'll ask board members if there's any item of business not already on the agenda that you would like to have recognized.
Mayor, if I could, I would love to enlode the coming up election for the sales tax and the bond election. Just at some point, for public record, give an update to the community about the meeting that administration was able to have with the DOJ and the EPA.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Okay. If there's nothing else on that item, we need to approve the April 15th regular minutes.
Some move.
And, I'm sorry, and the April 22nd, 24th, and 29th, 2025 special meetings that we had as well.
Some move.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, at this time, we'll go to the first item on the agenda.
Our first item this evening is a public hearing related to the Year 51 Community Development Block Grant Budget and the Year 32 Home Investment Partnership Act Program Budget, followed by consideration of a resolution authorizing both, as well as authorizing the submission of the program year 2025 action plan. Director of Community Development, Candace Gabucci, will speak to this item.
Okay, do we need to open the public meeting, a public hearing, Madam Clerk?
Not yet.
I'm sorry?
After she's done with her briefing.
Okay, thank you. You may proceed.
Good evening. On March 20th, 2025, the Community Development Advisory Committee held three public hearings to review funding requests for the Community Development Block Grant and the Home Investment Partnership Act Program Funds. Local agencies presented to our CDAC committee, and what you have before you is their recommendations. We have not received final budget numbers from HUD yet, so the numbers that you see are conservatively flat for this year. We are at $780,000 for CDBG, and then we're at $360,000 for home. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay. Thank you, Candace. At this time, we will formally open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, are there any citizens' comments?
None indicating.
Okay. This time, we will formally close the public hearing. With that, we entertain a motion to adopt a resolution.
Some move.
Second.
Thank you. This time, we'll entertain comments from the board. Are there any comments? Okay. Director Settle, you recommend?
I thank you. So, you say you haven't got the final budget yet from HUD.
Right.
If the budget comes less, are y'all just going to take a percent from everybody the same, just so it's equally?
We do. Yes, we prorate it out.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any further comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Directors Rego.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Kemp.
Yes.
George Kitzavas.
Yes.
Christina Kitzavas.
Yes.
Settle.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Motion passes and is approved. Seven in favor and zero opposed.
Item two, please.
Item two is an ordinance rezoning property at 721 North Greenwood Avenue. Deputy City Administrator Maggie Rice will speak to this item.
Yes, on April 8th, the Planning Commission held a public hearing to consider rezoning property located at 721 North Greenwood Avenue. Approval of the PZD will allow for the existing building to be utilized as a single-family residence. A neighborhood meeting was held on-site. There were no neighboring property owners that attended that meeting. At the Planning Commission meeting, Ms. Jasmine Ortega was present to represent the item. There were none present to speak in favor or opposition. The Planning Commission voted eight in favor with zero opposed to recommend the zoning map be amended.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, are there any citizens' comments from this item?
We do have Ms. Ortega to answer questions.
Okay, thank you for being here, sir. If not, we will entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance with suspension of the rules.
Some move with suspension of the rules?
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, Madam Clerk, please read the ordinance.
An ordinance rezoning identified property and amending the zoning map for property located at 721 North Greenwood Avenue.
Okay, thank you. Any comments from the board? Okay, seeing none, please call the roll.
Directors Good.
Yes.
Kemp.
Yes.
George Kitzavas.
Yes.
Christina Kitzavas.
Yes.
Settle.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Rego.
Yes.
Approved. Seven in favor and zero opposed.
This time, we entertain a motion to adopt the emergency clause.
Some move.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
I'm sorry, who seconded that?
Director Good.
Okay. Directors Kemp.
Yes.
George Kitzavas.
Yes.
Christina Kitzavas.
Yes.
Settle.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Rego.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Kemp.
Yes.
Kitzavas. George Kitzavas.
Yes.
Approved. Seven in favor and zero opposed.
Item number three.
Item three is an ordinance amending the 2019 Unified Development Ordinance on items related to driveway access for duplexes. Ms. Rice will speak to this item.
Yes, on April 8th, the Planning Commission held a public hearing to consider amending Section 27 502.3 of the Unified Development Ordinance. The proposed amendments allow duplexes access on a classified street. At present, this is not permitted. To date, the Planning Commission has granted five subdivision variances allowing this type of access. Additionally, staff request to add future minor arterial and minor arterial classified streets to the list of approved access for single-family and duplex structure. This classification was inadvertently omitted, and the Planning Commission voted eight in favor with zero opposed to recommend the UDO be amended.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Rice. Are there any public comments, Madam Clerk?
None indicating.
Okay. Motion to adopt the ordinance with suspension of the rules?
Some move.
Give a second, please.
Second.
Thank you. Please read the ordinance.
An ordinance amending the 2019 Unified Development Ordinance of the city of Fort Smith.
Okay, thank you. Any comments? We'll start with Director Neil Martin and come this way with Director Settle.
Maggie, so, right now, duplexes do not have a driveway off of... What do they have, if this does not go in, before this, where can a duplex have a driveway?
A local road, which is what we would consider a residential street.
Okay.
So, your typical neighborhoods are all residential streets. These are streets that are classified, meaning they have higher traffic counts. So, as a point of access management, we typically, or the code did not allow, for single-family structures and duplexes to have access onto these classified streets. In these instances, these were existing lots that were zoned for these uses. However, these citizens, these property owners, were having to come in and seek a variance in order to get a building permit to build what was permitted by zoning.
Okay.
So, with the qualifications that are, you can see in the section, there are a list of qualifiers that you have to meet in order to be allowed access, to be allowed access onto these classified streets.
So, let's take it back to the last item that we just talked about on 721 Greenwood. If that was a duplex, or if this were in effect, you could build a duplex there, if it was zoned properly. You could build a duplex and have a driveway going into the duplex off of North Greenwood.
Yes, so, Ms. Ortega actually did have a companion item, which was a subdivision variance. And her application, since we have now processed so many of those variances, is what prompted us to change, to seek the amendment to the code.
And we think that's a good, I mean, we think that there's no negative impact that we're going to see across the city. I mean, are there places that you can see that there's problems, that we wouldn't approve this? Or, well, actually, once this goes through, you can have those on any street, North Greenwood, anywhere else, where the zoning allows for it. So, are there any places that would potentially be problems, that we'd be opening ourselves up to something that we didn't intend?
Not when the zoning allows.
Not when the zoning allows.
And we also discussed this in detail with the engineering department.
Yeah.
And they were in concurrence.
Okay. I mean, the Planning Commission, there's developers on the Planning Commission, and so, you know, I look at that, it was an eight-ohs decision on the Planning Commission. So, you know, I know some of those folks know what they're doing. So, okay, I'll stop my questions there and kind of hear what everybody else has said.
Director Settle.
You went down the line. Maggie, do you have an example of variants that you gave that we know where it would be at, kind of get an idea in our head?
Ms. Ortega's property on North Greenwood would be an example.
Is there another one besides that you can think of?
Sure. Fort Lane, which is, it's up north across from, around OK Foods. There's a, in the Williams Lane, Newland Springs Neighborhood Association, Fort is a classified street, and there was a developer that wanted to put a duplex on the fort, and in order to have access on the Fort Lane, they had to seek a subdivision variance.
Okay, I understand that better. All right, thank you.
Are there any other questions from the board? Okay. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Directors George Kitzavas.
Yes.
Christina Kitzavas.
Yes.
Settle.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Rego.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Kemp.
Yes.
Kitzavas. George Kitzavas.
Yes.
Approved. Seven in favor and zero opposed.
We'll go to number four.
Item four is an ordinance amending the 2025 operating budget to reflect budget review discussions for all city departments conducted over the past three weeks. Chief Financial Officer Andy Richards will speak to this item and answer any questions the board may have.
So, in the board packet, we put in basically a new proposed budget for 2025 to incorporate the current amended budget where it was as of when we started this budget review, and then implemented all the cuts that were discussed during the study sessions that occurred the last few weeks. We did take notes and did make some changes that were requested by the board during that study session. I outlined those things in the memo to this item. There was just a handful. So, the projected column in these budget comparison summaries is basically what we're asking you to adopt as the new current 2025 operating budget for those four operating funds. In the packet, I know we included a wealth of information. We wanted to show you the allocations, how these things were distributed among the four operating funds. We also wanted to give you the original documents that were presented to you during the budget review by the various departments, and then also, we gave you a budget line item detail, where those cuts landed within the budget. And so, those things were used to compile the budgetary comparison summaries, specifically the projected budget for FY25. So, the ordinance that we've proposed tonight would adopt that column as the new budget going forward for 2025.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any public comments, Madam Clerk?
Yes, we have one. Chris Caddely. You'll have two minutes.
Yeah, I just have one quick question. So, there's no cuts from the parks budget on this at all? Everybody else, looks like most of the other departments took cuts, but nothing for parks? Is that right? Am I seeing that right, or?
We did discuss parks last week, and there were cuts associated with it. Does it come out of the general fund? Is that the general fund dollars here? Okay.
And the other kind of quick observation that I had was, and, you know, maybe just a question, is, so, is it just a coincidence that the 4.2 million is roughly the same amount of money that was spent on the water slides? Is that kind of, is this maybe designed as an offset to cover that draw from the general fund?
To be honest, it was actually more than that, but we chose not to move money from parks, or, excuse me, from police and fire. So, it was somewhere around the $5 million range, and so, when we took out those cuts from police and fire, or police and fire, I guess this is the remaining total. I don't think it had anything to do with the 4.2 million related to parks.
Just a coincidence?
It just, it works that way, I guess.
Okay.
I mean, it was starting to add up. Like, when I was doing the math, I was kind of starting to add it that way.
It'll be interesting to see how it plays out. I mean, I watched the video, you know, last week, and the back and forth between the departments as they made their presentations, and it seemed like some of these cuts were from vacant positions that had been vacant and may not have even been filled in the coming year. So, I don't know. I mean, I think it's a decent start, but I think there's a lot of work left to be done on the spending side. Anyway, that's my opinion. Thank you.
Was there anyone else, Madam Clerk?
No, that's it.
Okay, thank you. This time, we entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Some move.
Second.
Thank you. Comments from the board this time? Director Kemp.
Yes, I'm sure we're going to have many points of discussion. I think one thing I wanted to point out, and Andy, I have a question for you, just to confirm what I have read, and as I read it again, we're still going to be at a 17.7% contingency reserve percentage with the cuts, even as stated in this packet. The policy for the board is if it's below 20%, you would do what? Are we still going to have a reserve on the budget dollars for the next amount of months of the year, no matter what anyways, because we're still below 20%?
That would be my recommendation, and I think, I mean, I think the administrative hold is Mr. Dingman's call, but that would be my recommendation, that we continue to try to hold back dollars and improve that situation. So, when we get into, I mean, you've already passed the budget for the year the first time around with a similar situation. I mean, typically, that fiscal policy says if you're below 20, but above 15, then you reduce capital expenses.
Correct. But all we've done here, I mean, is, well, a lot of our positions were vacant positions that may or may not be filled, and we've went through that, we've addressed some of the education that can be deferred because there was not needed, there was a lot of travel there that we're able to defer down. I guess where I'm at is, in proposing a hypothetical here that I hope doesn't exist economically, I don't think it will exist either, but if the revenue from sales use tax doesn't, you know, come at a threshold, or when we put a 10% hold even on these dollars, what are we holding back on? You know, and then I think when we talk about the cuts, something is getting cut in that scenario, because if you're putting a 10% hold on dollars, that's already a cut, if you will. And I know we're talking about these conversations of how to get, where we're not budgeting with the deficit in mind, which I think is the stab and the start in the direction here, but if you have a 10% hold on this already, that's how the city always makes sure that we be in the year in the black. Is that correct?
Yeah. I mean, I think the budget cuts and a hold have the same outcome for us. The administrative hold is, you know, it's not a motion or an action taken by the board, but it's something that the administrator directs the departments to employ. It does give them some flexibility about where they save, and it gives them some flexibility to be able to maneuver during the year, but ultimately reach that goal. I mean, it only works if they are complying with it, but if we've seen that we've done this a couple different times in the past few years. We did it during COVID, and actually, we had it in play at the end of '24, when we realized, you know, things were getting tight. And, I mean, I think it's been successful. We have cut under budget during those years. Of course, you know, sometimes it's just a matter of delaying or deferring some maintenance or some, you know, purchases, which is okay, as long as you have the next go-around, you know, you can cover those things, but, you know, we've had success with the administrative hold in the past couple of years.
I think where I'm at is, because there are some amendments that I would like, I want to listen to the colleagues here, but there's some amendments that I want to propose in here that I'm not comfortable on this cut, on a couple of spots, that I'll be happy to speak to. But where I guess I'm at is, in the conversations about these cuts, it seemed as if, well, this is all we can cut, but then if you're on a 10% hold, and if you're on a 10% hold for three quarters of the year, then you're cutting something, because most of the year has gone by and you didn't do that. And what are those items on the list? And I think perhaps, coming back to a discussion as we get closer to the end of the year, I guess where I'm at is, we talk about fiscal year 2026. I would like to see us give ourselves enough time to review that, how could we go on a 10% hold for half a year, but then only have these sort of kind of cuts that we can make? Unless it's as if these are the cuts that we know we can make comfortably, and then after we make these cuts, there probably is more that could be cut, but we'll handle that whether we had to or not in our 10% holdback. And I'll throw my time back to my colleagues for a second here, but that's just a thing, a question, and maybe Jeff might want to speak to that, but that's the situation I'm finding myself here going, there has to be more room here to wiggle on, because otherwise, if you go on 10% hold, you would be not paying personnel salaries.
Right, and I would just say to that, that when, you know, we make a budget amendment like this, that has a hard impact on what the overall operating budget is for a department. But when we talk about an administrative hold, which we likely will continue to do, but that just makes the department head pay that much more attention to where their spending is. If we get to a point through the year that, and a line item that they didn't propose a cut necessarily, but going above the 10% hold will allow them to do something that they need to do at the end of the year, we can still allow that, but we'll have a discussion and make an informed decision as to what happens. And also, when we start getting into the budget process, which happens through most of the fall, we also pay, you know, specific attention to the, we'll have a projected expense line item for the rest of 2025, and departments always pay specific attention to that, so we come up with a good number for what we actually estimate we will spend through the end of the year. And so, that plays a part in our budgeting process as to how much money is left in the '25 budget to then either, you know, contribute to the contingency reserve.
Okay, thank you.
The one thing that you can't cut, but savings that you can realize that aren't because of a cut or a hold, is the vacancy for positions. And this, and sometimes this occurs just because you're filling, you know, you may not, we may not have a, we may have cut some positions, but we're still going to have some positions that are in the budget for 12 months that aren't filled for the full 12 months. So, that is usually naturally occurring throughout the year. We don't know how much that is, or how much that could be, till we get towards the back half of the year, and so, we start seeing those things. And those things are going to occur whether there's a budget or a budget cut.
Right, but when we talk about beginning with a budget that doesn't budget with a deficit in mind, but a surplus, we're going to have to find some way, in a policy-oriented way, to figure out how to spend less than we bring in. And, you know, to your point, that was the point of the last three weeks, is tell us what positions are there. So, I mean, I don't know if there are more positions that we presume besides the ones we talked about, but I mean, just one case in point, I mean, I think the other thing that we feel here, or I have felt, is we need to make sure that we're not shooting ourselves in the foot on some of this process. So, give you an example, I have great concerns about this transit dollars when we're throwing away a lot of money that is federal money. By dieting that down, 80% of that fund, I believe, is federal, yes, I see Ken shaking his head, is there. So, we're making this cut, and we're saying no thank you to a lot of money in that process. Another one I'm a little concerned about, I'll just throw the other two out, would be, the Planning Commission has talked about this position that's available, that they could cut for this year, because they promote them from within, but when we talked about it, one of the things I was trying to say when I said I was amenable was the idea of, let's have a conversation, are we really wanting planning to go without filling a staff position that they're going to say, well, we can just leave it empty for the year? When I talk to businesses, the one thing I always hear is- When I talk to businesses, the one thing I always hear is it can be hard to get answers. And the last thing I want to do is have planning running around trying to figure out how to be short-staffed for the rest of the year when really it was a position that was there. And the other, the only other one that I have concerns about is I have vocalized these things campaigning. And I would say many of us have heard these comments about the mowing that the Parks Department and those that do, and yet they still have a need for two trucks. And so when we talk about the money that they have proposed, I I would like to see mowing done better in Fort Smith. And that department had a truck broke broke down on them a couple of weeks ago. And they had to load it on a trailer and bring it back because it's a truck that is in terrible shape and is old. I I have a hard time expecting them to mow at a quality that they should when they have broke down equipment that can't pull out their equipment to go to work. So I don't know if we can allocate them to buy two used trucks. I mean, I think their trucks are so disrepaired that even just a used purchase would be an upgrade for them. But those are my comments of the, those are three tension points I have felt in this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next in the queue was Director Settle. Director Good was behind you.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, I just had a couple of questions I wanted to clarify. So with with streets, what I heard Matt say is there should be no operational impact to with these cuts. Like, we'll be still be able to mow, we'll still be able to do all those things that we need to do. So so I that's 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 why I'm I'm okay with those cuts. I know that, yes, they probably need equipment. But but those, I'm I'm under the assumption that operationally we're good.
If I if I may.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Streets and parks take care of various mowings throughout the city. The Jenny Lynn median in Fiena Hills, which is always something of my bone of my contention, is taken care of by the Parks Department, not the Streets Department. They contract that one out.
Okay.
But the other things that they don't contract out, which is a lot of mowing, is not done by Matt's department. I mean, I'm agreeing with you.
It's done by eight.
I'm not questioning the one point two million dollar cuts for street maintenance. I'm questioning the parks cuts and the general fund allocation, the one point three, giving them an ability to go get two used trucks and let's expect mowing, but let's let's give them the proper equipment.
Well, and and so I I feel like, you know, the the whole point of this is, you know, want to make sure that we can still operationally do the things we need to do. The other, the other point about, you know, you talked about the Planning Commission position. I think the the point of this exercise is to go through and and make appropriate budget cuts. But if we get into a situation where planning needs that, like it's where they are, they are operationally having problems, I think the the point is they come back to the board and we authorize it. So I think to me, it's it's pulling some of this stuff away. And then the requests come right here and we make the approval. So if 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 it's truly something that's a problem, I would hope that that would come back to us to look at and to vote on rather than just you giving the authority to say, okay, buy, hire that person, buy that truck. I think we're we're trying to be as stickler as we can around this budget. And those things need to come through us legislatively. That's my, that's my thought process. So that was a couple of things I wanted to talk about related to your comments, Mr. Kemp. I had a couple of things. First off, and and I think there might be some others that are gonna be addressing this. The reallocation, the cost allocation that we talked about back in January. I was not for it then. And I, when I'm studying for my packet, I realize it's here. I wasn't, I wasn't necessarily prepared for that. I didn't think that was any really even part of the discussion. So I was, I was a little taken aback by that being included here. I haven't fully gotten a chance to assess the information that you sent us. We got it like four fifty three, almost five o'clock. So I haven't really got a chance to assess what that would be. So I think we need to talk about that allocation in terms of what's the impact if we kept the allocations as they were today? Because in my head, when I looked at those reallocations, it was taking for positions of the mayor, Board of Directors, City Administrator, those are the the first things that hit 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 me on the on the sheet that we got, was was taking more dollars, a higher percentage from water and sewer than the old allocation was. And I was, I was against that when I originally saw it. So we'll, we'll, we'll talk about that here in just a second. The other thing that I I also have a question about is on page one forty eight of our packet, it shows the general fund budget comparison summary. And thank you, Josh, for putting it on here. Is that the, is that, okay, yeah, it is the right page. So I look at operations services and I look at non-departmental, the expenses associated with that. So the adopted budget is what was adopted by the board through our budget hearings. That's that's the adopted amount. But then I look at the FY amended budget, which is we're now in May, and I see a difference in those two line items of pretty significant millions of dollars. What is that? What did we approve between January and May fifth that caused those numbers specifically in operations and non-departmental going from eight point six million to thirteen point five, from five point six to thirteen point nine? What did we approve? I mean, we 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 purchased the building, but what else did we? I mean, that's like, what is that, like ten, that's over ten million dollars?
Yeah.
What is it?
The building.
Which is four point one.
The carryovers that you that were approved, some of those are in there.
Okay.
The airport, specifically, the the payment of the the project overruns on the arresting gear system.
That didn't happen in twenty four?
You you appropriated it in twenty four.
Carried over.
But it was carried over.
It was one of our carryovers?
Yes.
Okay.
So, I mean, I've got a list, I've been keeping a list of each ordinance and kind of have it allocated out by the funds.
Okay, that would be.
I can start sending that to you as well because I've been, I mean, when I look at those numbers, I ask myself the same question. How do we get there?
Well, I think those are decisions that we made in two thousand twenty four and just didn't didn't pay until two thousand twenty five.
Some are. The, you know, as far as the other, the other categories beyond non-departmental, I mean, we had the 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 wage increases that went into effect in April. You know, those, those were things, those were amendments that were made. And then also, you know, there, there's large dollars of roof repairs in these numbers, but they're, you know, we've got, we collected revenues in advance on those things. So those are impact, those are things that are impacting these changes.
Okay. The the last thing that I have, and I do, I I don't know if my my colleagues will be talking about the the reallocation numbers, but I always talk about the debt service coverage ratio as it relates to this. And specifically how that impacts water and water rates. I have my March thirty first, two thousand twenty five financials that you sent the board. Based on what I'm, what I'm seeing, I'm seeing some prior year actuals as adopted as amended. But the actual to date looks as though we're we're in a healthy spot in terms of the debt service coverage ratio at one hundred and forty one percent. Is that correct?
Yeah, based on the numbers that were through the first quarter.
So anything that we do with this, is there any material impact to that debt service coverage ratio of one hundred and forty one percent as it sits today?
As far as the budget, no.
I mean, actually, we'll be, we'll be lessening costs, so that might potentially.
I mean, I think there's, you know, there's, there was probably a less, you know, of course, there's the timing of the spending of the budget for water and sewer. I don't know, you know, they didn't spend a lot during the first three months. But we did, we did realize the water revenue increases. But if you notice, I think usage is down.
That, which was expected.
Yeah.
Expected. And just.
But yeah, they did have, we did have a good first quarter for for water and sewer.
So we've, we've got to keep our eyeballs on that. That's that's my ask of the rest of the board. And have we, I know that four of us is doing the internal audit at this point. We heard anything about the debt service coverage ratio in in twenty four?
Right now, I'm still sitting at one ten.
One, one ten, right on the nose.
Yes, so. And so we're getting, we're getting closer to having some finality there, but.
Okay.
But yeah.
Well, I'm I'm gonna turn my.
We're close.
I'm gonna turn my time over. I I think hopefully one of my board directors will talk about the reallocation. And if not, I'll, I'll address that in a minute.
Director Settle.
I'll let Director Good, since he's probably go next, and after that, whenever I turn back in, I'll wait. Mayor.
Okay, Director Good, you're recognized.
Thank you, Director Settle. Thank you, Mayor. Director Kemp, appreciate your comments. I share many of your same comments. You know, I just want to start out by saying that, first of all, we don't need to wait till we have problems before we address these problems. You know, we we talked about during our study session about being reactionary opposed to being proactive. So in in saying that, Andy, so when I'm looking at these cuts, these cuts do not reflect the conversation that we had last week at the study session. Example being transit, being parks. We 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 looked over police and fire, planning. Do these cuts reflect the discussions discussed during that meeting? Because during that meeting, several of the board's comments were it was not our intent to negatively impact operations. So that was a lot of our discussion, particularly, I'll give you an example of parks, when we talked about the LED lighting, security, the equipment needs. You know, these can be cut this year as discussed. If they are needed this year and we don't pay for them this year, they will roll over to next year. If they're in need now, there'll be a need in the future. So again, do we pass, do we just carry these needs over to next year and address them again? Again, do we want to be reactionary or proactive? You know, we talk about giving our departments what they need. You know, we listened to Maggie tell us that, yes, she could do, I'm sorry, Ms. Rice, I apologize. Talked about Ms. Rice, talked about the planning position. Is it needed? Absolutely it is. Will it have an impact on operations? Sure it is. Can they do without it for a while? Sure she can. Sure they can. They're professionals. But is that what we want about out of our operations? Is that what we want, to give customer service to our citizens? So we got to the police department. Matter of fact, let me just let you answer the question. Do do these numbers reflect those cuts that we talked about not cutting?
There's, there's, these cuts are as was presented by the departments with a few exceptions. So we tried to catch everything that was, you know, that was, you know, I mean, obviously, police and fire, there were to be no cuts.
Correct.
So we did not include those. I believe there was a consensus decision not to cut this IT position.
Correct.
So we didn't, so we left that out. Water and sewer, we didn't cut, there's not as many cuts because some of those things you guys voted on to transfer and use for equipment purchases. And so those are the changes we've made. There was a change to the, you know, transit, you know, we, they did cut some of those capital expenditures, and there were some federal reimbursements that were related to those. So we cut that as well, cut the rev, the related revenue.
Okay.
So everything else is in there. If there was something else that needed to be omitted, I missed that.
I believe you caught it. If you caught these major ones that we did discuss at the last meeting and those monies have been put back in the budget, then that answers my question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, Director Settle.
Thank you, Mayor. To the department heads, thank you very much for the doing this for the board. We appreciate your time and due diligence on it. Andy, great job. Thank you very much. To the board, you know, we did get a, a couple of weeks ago, we did get the first quarter. And the general fund balance was to be thirty two point eight percent, if I read my numbers right. Does that sound about right, Andy?
Yeah.
So everything we have tonight is based on the budgets, but the actuals we got, first quarter actuals are here to that. As far as allocation, I'm on the fence on this one. You know, I I think we should have left the two thousand twenty four allocation in there. But I'm willing to to let it roll tonight and look at it. But I I want to study it a bit longer. Doesn't mean I won't come back to this board and ask to undo it as we can, as we can vote on budgets as much as we want once the budget's approved. So that's why I think today's a good, good thing to talk about. I think we we made some cuts to the budgets. I don't, you know, if we see a need, as Director Martin talked about, come back to us, ask the board for it, make the pitch. Show that there's a need. And typically, when there's a need and we we need to fill it, we'll give allocation. But, you know, I think this is a good start and we'll go from there. So thank you very much.
Director Rego.
Thanks, Mayor. So I'm just gonna be honest. It seems like the wanting to have the new allocation mixture that was prepared and that we discussed and had sort of inconclusive conversations about back in January. You know, it seems like this was kind of piggybacked into a big budget resolution that we were going to be voting on. You know, I don't think that that's something that should be put in there concurrently, especially when, you know, I mean, I'm looking at a article from Talk Business back in January when we talked about this. And, you know, our CFO said when we had the, you know, it was quoted in the articles, when we had the study come, you know, I thought we would be able to get some relief to help the Water and Sewer Fund with the new allocations, quote, but I was surprised that that wasn't the case. And so, you know, that's an important thing to me, and I think the conversation probably should continue on that. And I mean, when you look at just the board of directors, to pull out one example, you know, we're operating with old allocation of thirty seven percent coming from the Water and Sewer Fund. And the formula that's, you know, we're being asked to adopt tonight, that goes up to forty seven percent. And, you know, that just, again, seems to me like these were separate topics, if you will. And so I would certainly be in favor of of having that separated out, particularly when the ordinance that's in front of us doesn't actually specifically say anything about the cost allocations. It just talks about we're amending the operating budget and adopts these projected revenues and, you know, et cetera. It doesn't even specifically mention a change in the allocation formulas and of the respective third-party firm that conducted the study. But I just think that that's still somewhat of an unsettled question amongst us to just be sort of Christmas tree into a bigger bill.
Okay, thank you. Director Neil Martin.
Well, and to that point, and thank you, Director Rego, I I make a motion to amend this ordinance to include the allocations from two thousand twenty four.
I'll second that motion.
To include the, I'm sorry, to include the, to include the carryover from two thousand twenty two. No, no, this is just the allocation. So if you look at, well, let me, let me, let me get back there. The, the, the dollars, how they were being allocated across different funds. We discussed that in January. Yeah. I was not real happy about it. I don't think you were very happy about it. I'm not sure what the the temperature of the board was, but. So why the change of heart now? The, the allocations, I felt, were better in twenty four because they kept more money into water and sewer and I think also streets and sanitation. So I would rather keep more money in water and sewer, sanitation, streets with the allocations from twenty four versus using these new allocations that have been included with this agenda item.
But sanitation is an enterprise fund, does they get no city funding, correct?
But George, it's it's how we, how our allocations are, it's how the mayor's budget, the city administrator boards, HR.
Allocated over sanitation?
Allocated different percentages. We're gonna go back to the twenty four, we're asking to go back to the two thousand twenty four allocation instead of the new two thousand twenty five.
So for, for example, George, on on the mayor's budget, let's look at that, it's the very first one we see. In two thousand twenty four, less money was coming out of water and sewer and going into the mayor's budget.
Okay.
According to these new allocations, more money is coming out of water and sewer and going to the mayor's, a higher percentage, I should say, is going to the mayor's budget. And I would, I would like to keep those as they were in twenty four. And I would, I would like to keep those as they were in '24 and not go to the allocation model change in '25, until we kind of take it and fully look at it. And, I mean, we got an email today at 5:00 that showed the differences between the two. I would rather have them as they were in '24, as we know them and as we understand them.
Okay, thank you.
Well, and the other point that I think is worth mentioning is that, at least as best I could tell, in the brief opportunity that we were given to assess the particulars of this, the 2025 allocation changes as presented were grafted onto, were shown in relation to the original allocated budget numbers, not even the newer, lower figure. And so, you know, I just think it's obviously a conversation, and to Director Kemp's point earlier, about as we're progressing further and further into the year, we need to consider and think conscientiously about how we approach the 2026 budget. I just, I'm in support of what you're saying about keeping the existing allocation mixture in place, and then, you know, obviously, there's a conversation in the future for the next budget cycle.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Director Kemp, you may go ahead. You have a question, or?
I just, I have a question, and since there is a motion and a second, do we need to do any action on that at all?
Well, I was gonna let you make your comment.
I will voice, my questions are not pertaining to that. It's pertaining to this actual discussion on the budget. But I will say that my sentiment is, I would agree, the allocation should be a separate conversation. It's very unlikely, I will check my email an hour and a half before this meeting, and if it's something that I need to be voting on, I'm gonna, I need more time to think about that as well. So, I share an agreement among colleagues on that. If I could, Mr. Savage, could you, could you come up, please? Thank you, Andy.
Thank you, Director Kemp.
Yeah, Savage, just, could you spell out for us just very clearly, how much federal money are we saying no to within approving these cuts as proposed tonight?
It'd be $337,500 out of the $446,000 that we submitted as cuts.
And that is federal money?
That's federal money.
That we're gonna be saying no to tonight?
That's correct.
Versus, what is our 20% on that?
So, so there, there's a variation of percentages that has to do with each line item that we're recommending for the cuts. Mostly, most of that is an 80/20, and some of it, that's operations, is a 50/50. So, overall, it's about a 75% federal ratio compared to the cut that we recommended.
So, is it fair to say most of these cuts that you're proposing are federal dollars, not dollars from the general fund? Is that correct?
That's correct. Most of our overall budget for transit is federal.
Yeah, okay, thank you, Mr. Savage. And to my point, that does not make sense. I don't, I don't know why I would vote for that tonight. And it puts me in a conundrum of, am I a no vote on these amendments, or can we make some amendments? And I, another question, I guess, for Ms. Rice. Ms. Rice, how long, because we're in May. How long, if you had a green light to fulfill this vacancy that has been proposed to be cut? And by my understanding is, the only reason this exists, because it was, a promotion needed to happen. You promoted from within in your department. So, this spot's open, but it's not really an extra position that's just sitting around vacant for year on year on end, correct?
That's correct.
And how long do these positions take to fulfill? Because it is a niche, planning commission background. How long would you estimate, if you had a green light today, would you give yourself to try to find the right candidates and go through the process of hiring someone? How many months would that take?
I would say six weeks to two months, probably.
Okay, so six weeks to two months. So, thank you. You know, we're already on, I just want to remind us, we're already on a 10% holdback. Administration is doing its job, and staff is doing its job to make sure that we don't end this year in the red. That, to me, and if I could, Ms. Duster, if you wouldn't mind, could you, could you come up, please? That's not the way, that's what I'm trying to make clear.
Okay, please.
Ms. Duster, you and I have talked about parks and department, and we've talked about mowing and all kinds of things of that nature. Could you describe the current situation of need for the Parks Department?
We have to have trucks. Right now, we're band-aiding it as best we can. It's something we've asked for, for the last couple of years. We haven't got it. And we're making do with what we have, but what we have is not much.
Is it fair to say that when you have asked for it, that that conversation was more, that list was whittled out in administration before it came to this board?
Probably.
Is that, is that, I mean, are you, has this board heard that you need vehicles?
I, it was on the new needs list that typically it's, here's the new needs. We present it separately, and then sometimes it's, we discuss it later, but sometimes other priorities take place, and that discussion never happens. And I think that's kind of where we have been.
Because I'm, what I'm, where I'm at is, we're saying, well, they can bring it back when they need it. My understanding is that it's already been voiced that they needed it. Now, whether that got to this, this room here and discussion, that's a critique upon administration, if you will, and that process of that. But could you describe, the other day, you all have, you've sequestered a vehicle that's not utilized in the parking garage, but it really can't be the kind of vehicle to pull trailers, correct?
Let me ask a question of administration real quick. Jeff, does this fit in the 18 cents, capital cents, as a capital piece?
It does not. We've not used, since it's been reauthorized, we've remitted it to capital projects and that capital equipment.
We do have a motion and a second for that thing, and I, I, sorry to interrupt, sorry.
Yeah, no, and that's why I was asking whether we wanted to have that vote on the allocation. I just, before we vote on these budget amendments, I think we need to feel those three points, and that's the point I wanted to make. Where it stands today, you're, and my understanding is that you're in need of at least two trucks.
That's correct.
That actually start when they have a key in them.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Duster. Appreciate it. So, where I'm at is, you know, I want to find inefficiencies, and I want to make those cuts. I do feel like this process, you know, when I, as I've spoke originally to this, there's more to be discussed in this at some point. Because if you can have a 10% hold to half of the year, well, where are we putting the holds? I mean, how could we do that if it's truly, these are all the cuts that we've talked about? And I think it's human nature. If you asked me to come up with, me and Director George Kostavas's mint collection fund, that him and I eat mints over here, and I want to keep buying these mints on this table over here for me and him, then I'm gonna propose some sort of cut that I hope you would just go, oh, no, we don't want to do that. And so, then we say no to that, and then everybody kind of takes their eyes off of me, versus really looking at the list. Because I still go, there has to be some sort of way to bridge this conversation. If you can have a 10% hold, we do need to figure out, how is that even possible? If these were the only things we could have. But on these particular amendments, as they have been brought, these are three that I have concern about. I am in agreement with the motion of amendment for the allocations, but I would love to hear if there's any directors that are in agreement with me on these particular ones that I've mentioned. Thank you.
Mayor, a point of parliamentary inquiry, we have a motion and a second on the floor to vote on amending the proposal in front of us as it relates to the allocation process and procedures. And I think we need to handle that amendment, and then the floor would be back open for additional potential amendments.
And I agree, but chose to hear what he had to say this.
Certainly.
Okay, thank you. We do have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk?
This is on the motion to amend.
Yes.
Director Settle?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Rigo?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
George Kostavas? Christina Kostavas?
Yes.
Motion passes, seven in favor and zero opposed.
Mayor, I'd like to make an additional amendment motion to rescind the proposed transit cuts as part of this package.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to rescind the proposed cuts to transit. Any discussion? Madam Clerk? Director Good, you're recognized.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Andy, that was actually my question that I was asking from the discussion last week, just like the parks cuts we're discussing, repealing right now. I thought, my question was, are those cuts removed from this budget? So, what I'm, what I'm asking is, just like the money from the parks, I mean, from, well, parks, IT, all the things we discussed, do we need to rescind them all, or are they part of this presented document that we have before us now?
You don't need to rescind them all because I didn't include the ones that I mentioned. The, you know, but I did, the parks went in as presented. So, if you're, if you're looking to, or the transit, you know, if you're looking to rescind particular ones, those were incorporated cuts into this budget, so those do need to be, if you're looking to take those cuts away, then you would need to amend what I've proposed.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the board? Madam Clerk?
Directors Martin?
This is as amended to include transit?
This is to.
This is to, this is to rescind the transit?
Yes.
No.
Rigo?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
George Kostavas? Christina Kostavas?
Yes.
Settle?
Yes.
Motion passes, six in favor and one opposed.
Okay. And so, as a point of clarification, if I may, Mayor.
Yes.
So, the budget ordinance package here that's now in front of us, as it currently stands with, after the two amendments, is we no longer have the 2025 allocation mixture automatically put in there. The mixture will remain as it is in 2024, and the package now no longer represents, includes the cuts, the $446,000, that's mostly federal money, as Director Kemp pointed out. That is no longer included.
Right. So, we're gonna, we're gonna vote on this as amended, okay?
Failing other amendments, of course. I mean, if there aren't any other amendments.
I, whether I'm proposing an amendment, I guess where I'm at is, a point of inquiry for my colleague, Director Martin. Are you saying, by approving the rest of these amendments, that the planning finds in 30 days that they cannot maintain this structure? Or, as Ms. Duster, by the next regular meeting, can bring us some invoices for equipment, that you would prefer to see it that way so that it could be approved then?
Well, I think we ultimately have the authority to do that. However, if we're gonna make cuts, we're gonna make cuts. That's my opinion. So, that was part of the reason that I didn't vote for the transit. I want to, if we're gonna truly cut, we need to cut. But, we do have the authority, the legislative authority, to, if Maggie comes and says, I, we are, we are being hit significantly with something because I don't have this position, I think we have the authority to be able to put that back in if we need to.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we rescind from this package the planning commission personnel cut and authorize Parks Department $80,000 of their cuts back to their budget to address the demand for equipment. That's where it goes.
Okay, any discussion on those amendments? Director Good?
Thank you, Mayor. I will second the motion for the amendment, and my comment is, going back to the Parks budget, during the discussion that we all had, it was said multiple times by multiple directors that we saw the benefit in the security systems and LED lighting. So, if it's, if it's an issue to see the benefit at a study session, we should reflect that now in rescinding the Parks budget on this item.
Thank you. Director Rigo?
Thank you. So, for clarification, since Director Kemp put a number figure on an amount to go back towards the Parks Department, specifically for their equipment, Maggie, would you mind refreshing us? I mean, there's a lot of pages here. What's the dollar figure associated with this position in the Planning Department?
$67,000.
Thank you.
Thank you. How much is the two trucks? Because that's, I understand that's what you're saying. Yeah, I'm, the two trucks, I don't know a number, but I don't really want to limit.
I think Sarah's coming up with the number.
Okay, good. So, if she came with the number, I'm just advocating giving room for even used trucks to be purchased. I don't think that's gonna buy new.
This is based on August 2024 pricing, when we submitted our budget. Two trucks, and they have gone up, was 140 grand. And those are four-wheel drive. One is a dump truck, and one's a, pretty much a service truck. But, you know, you can buy something cheap, and it can work for a year or two, or you can invest in something and have it last. The ones we're replacing are 2003s. So, it's one of those, do you want to, do you want us to go with something cheap to get it here? Or do you want us to go with something that's sustainable?
And what were those amounts on the lighting and security cameras?
One was $6,000, and the security cameras was pretty significant.
I think it was 12,000. Was it 12,000, sir, for the cameras?
It was pretty, the one, which security cameras? Because I had some. Personally, we feel the security cameras that would have been at the Glass Pavilion, the security cameras, we actually asked IT to pull footage today, do the Glass Pavilion justice, and we don't think any more would be necessary. But ones at Crete Moore Community Center, those were about 20 grand, all in.
But to speak to the point again, you all feel that the cameras indeed are sufficient at this time?
For the Glass Pavilion, yes. And Crete Moore Community Center, we were comfortable with delaying those because they haven't had working cameras in 10 years. We haven't had an issue, but sometimes when you say that out loud, something happens the next week. So, I think it's weighing in.
Have we looked into our police trailers as well, though, that have a camera option on top of those?
Yes, the police department has been great. When we have an issue, it's usually out in the park. Captain Creek's been great to move it where we need it, but we've never really had an actual facility issue.
I just picked a number because I know there are cuts that have been proposed that are, I am favorable of. But Ms. Duster's talked about 140,000. She's mentioned prices have changed. I'll amend it to 150,000.
Thank you.
I'll second that amendment.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor?
Yeah, Director Settle?
So, when I look through the packet here, where do I see the cuts for the trucks? I mean, that's what I'm asking the board. Then why are we talking about it here?
We're just, yeah, I'm looking for an answer.
I mean, if, then we're talking about budget cuts, not new additions that aren't even on my agenda tonight, and some number that I, I don't have a quote here to discuss. So, why not get a quote and have her justify the need at a future board meeting or study session, instead of saying, it's a number, we're pulling out of the number, and it's not even in my packet tonight?
I do, I do agree with Director Settle. I think that the motion, as it currently stands on the floor, combines things that are different structurally. To Director Settle's point about, one is kind of a more, a new thing that could perhaps certainly be addressed down the line, you know, with a quote and further research. The $67,000 figure from planning represents something that was actually proposed as a cut in the package, and would be, you know, more, I think would be more aligned with the amended, amending actions we've already taken tonight to react to the planning issue, separate from a new or a fresh. a new or a fresh proposal from, from the Parks Department.
Point of inquiry, I'll, I'll make an amendment to it. It's fair. I will speak to it first, since I did make it and why I did. I mean, I voiced this in the last meeting when we talked about this with Parks Department. The reason I voiced it is because it's never been voiced in this room, or has gotten to this dais. And so at some point, when we talk about the quality of our mowing, and the quality of our parks, and different things of that nature, and some things that are not parks, we need to bring to light the things that we know of. So I can make an amendment to fair game that. I would say, I amend my amendment to just include the Planning Department personnel position that they have proposed for cuts be rescinded from this as proposed in our packet.
Okay.
I second that.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second.
Last question. Hold on. Did, did, did we not, you're, you're saying rescind the planning commission cut?
Yeah, rescind the cut.
Oh, only, that's the only thing?
Yes.
For the, yes.
Okay.
For clarification?
Yes.
Could you withdraw your first amendment?
Sure, I withdraw my first amendment. And I would like to now make a new amendment that we would rescind the cuts that Planning Department has proposed within the personnel position that would be vacant.
Second. Okay. Okay, we have the amendment, the motion and the second. Madam Clerk, would you restate, state that for, so everyone knows what we're voting on?
The motion is to merely rescind the Planning Department's position. Is that correct?
Rescind the cut.
The cut.
Rescind the cuts.
Yes.
Yes, rescind the cut.
Right, okay.
They, they had multiple cuts here, so, I mean, I'm looking it up. Is this just a salary cut of 67,000, or is it all 89,000?
Just the salary, just the position.
Just the position. Okay, thank you. All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Directors Rego?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
George Kitzavas?
No.
Christina Kitzavas?
Uh, she stepped.
Settle?
I'm a no right now.
Martin?
No.
The motion is defeated with three in favor and three opposed.
Okay, thank you.
To, to keep the, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
To keep the conversation going, I think it's important that we consider this thoughtfully because I think it's an important reminder that, you know, doing this rescinding would allow maximum flexibility to remain with our deputy city administrator and Planning Director on this. And of course, it's fair to say that if she does take some number of months to fill the position, I mean, you're not spending any money, of course, unless or until Ms. Rice is fortunate enough to have a qualified candidate. So I, you know, I think that it's important to really consider and, you know, take a full vote with everybody present. And so if it's in order, Ms. Gard, to make a motion that is similar to one that just occurred, is that permitted?
You, you can make a motion to reconsider, as long as, and you were one who voted in the affirmative?
Well, I would like to make a motion to reconsider the amendment that was just previously on the table, to rescind the personnel cut of $67,000 to the Planning Department.
Second. Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk?
What, what is it, Mayor? Hold on.
Correcting language from Commission Department, I believe.
Correct.
This.
We're just doing it again because we, we're all present.
If I could, Mayor, before, because, I just, the reason I want to echo, that is our deputy city administrator that we're saying, your department can go one less position. We want you to work hard. So she's gonna have to work the Planning Department position. I just think philosophically, we should think about that. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk.
Just to clarify, the motion on the floor is merely to reconsider the previous motion.
Okay.
Yes.
So a yes vote on the motion to reconsider allows us to vote once again on the amendment?
That is correct.
Yes.
Okay.
Directors Good?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
George Kitzavas?
No.
Christina Kitzavas?
No.
Settle?
No.
Martin?
No.
Rego?
Yes.
Motion is defeated, three in favor and four opposed.
Thank you all for going through the exercise. It's always nice to participate in a parliamentary process.
Okay, very good. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I believe we'll, there's a final passage of votes now?
We need a final passage. As amended. Madam Clerk?
Can I just, since I was out, just get some clarification? So we're voting on this minus transit? Is that where we're at, is where we left things?
Yes.
And not the reallocation.
Not the reallocation, okay. Thank you.
Okay. This is, the motion is to approve the ordinance with the noted amendments.
Yes.
Directors Kemp?
Yes.
George Kitzavas?
No.
Christina Kitzavas?
Yes.
Settle?
Yes.
Martin?
I am a yes, I'm still against transit, but I'm a yes.
Rego?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
The motion passes, six in favor and one opposed.
Thank you very much. Item five.
Item five was requested by the board at the April 29 special meeting and is a resolution directing at a special election. We called on the date of the 2030 primary election and presenting a measure on the election ballot for voters to realign and authorize available city sales and use taxes for the same effective period. As this item was requested by the board, staff will yield to the board's discussion.
Okay, thank you. All the citizens' comments, Madam Clerk?
Yes, just one, Crystal Caddeli. Do you all have two minutes?
Good evening. I, I want to say that I am in favor of separating the fire and police from the, the tax reallocation proposal. I think that the citizens have the right to decide if they want to keep it every eight years versus 34. Sitting here tonight, listening, I'm gonna be honest, I think this whole reallocation is probably gonna fail, just because as a citizen, listening, you guys just do not know how to make cuts. You make cuts and then you just respend the money. And I think the fear of the citizens, although I'm sure Mr. Morton came up with a wonderful plan, and it probably would work, but we can't trust that you aren't gonna continually spend our money like you have a blank check. And I think that that's the real issue. I, you know, first quarter of this year's water and sewer revenues versus last quarter of 2024 brought in $1.6 million more. And that's, I mean, versus summer. So we know summer, we're probably gonna double in those revenues, plus the sewer rate's gonna go in effect June 1st. So, you know, things like parks, the mayor budget, those are non-essential. Those are fund budgets that, you know, should really be what's taking the hit, not our critical departments, our streets, our police, our water and sewer, our fire departments. I mean, the way that you do cuts is maybe, maybe the Parks Department needs to hire a third party to do the mowing, where it cuts salaries, it cuts insurance, it cuts assets. It actually cuts things. So, you know, I would ask that they actually do their job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all.
Mayor, may I make a motion to approve item five?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, any further comments from the board? Director Neil Martin and Director Settle?
So, you know, I think one of the things that, you know, maybe Ms. Caddeli hit on, you know, I think the board, the board listens. You know, I think this is one of the things that, that we agreed upon, and maybe it was an oversight when we, when we first put this forward. So I think this is an example of us and the citizens working together to make sure that we get this thing as right as possible. You know, I know that this is, you know, there's a lot of people on, on both sides of the issue related to the, the tax extension or, and the reallocation. But I think this is a good step in doing what we, what we, what we need to be doing. And so, you know, I'm, I'm happy to move forward on this. One thing that I have, have heard is, you know, oversight around spending sales tax dollars. You know, what, what mechanism in place, is in place to oversee the spending, especially if we're going to the board, or we're going to the citizens and the citizens are, are voting on a reallocation package, allocating more dollars to, to, for the consent decree. But one of the things that we put in place as a part of our agreement back in 2022 is a sales tax review committee. And it's made up of citizens that are, not, not any of these board members, but it's made up of citizens. And I think it's important that we hear from that committee, especially this is day one of voting. So Mr. Walter Echols is in the audience tonight. I would like to maybe call him up and ask him a couple questions. Mr. Echols, thank you for being here. So what's your role on the sales tax review committee?
Well, I'm, I am Walter Echols. I'm assistant in Fort Smith, and I've served as the chairman of the sales tax review committee since its inception in 2022, beginning after the first quarter of 2023. And for every quarter through the fourth quarter of '24, the committee has met in public meetings and reviewed a report reflecting sales tax collections and details of expenditures for each dedicated sales tax of the city, as well as a portion of the Sebastian County sales tax that the city receives. The meetings are attended by Andy Richards, our CFO, and, and in most cases by Jeff Dingman, and on occasion a city director and members of the public. City officials respond to questions and comments from this committee regarding the information presented, will review in the immediate past quarter each time. The committee then votes on whether to accept the reports submitted by the city. In all cases, the reports have been vigorously reviewed, lots of discussion, and is approved as presented. Based on the information presented by the city and reviewed by the committee, all sales tax fund expenditures made by the city during the period from January 1, 2022, through December 31, 2024, have been made for the purposes approved by the voters, by the voters in the respective election, or in the case of the city's portion of the county's sales tax in accordance with resolution adopted by the Fort Smith City Board of Directors. The members, active members of the sales tax committee are Kenneth Slaughter, Ward One, Richard Morris, Ward Two, Frank Gliadwell, Ward Three, Walter Echols, Ward Four, Amy Whittington at large, Lee Esley at large, and Donella Jordan at large.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Echols. Does anybody have any questions for, for Mr. Echols? We appreciate your, your service. We appreciate the, the work that you guys do. So, Mr. Echols, we thank you very much for that.
You're welcome. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Do you mind? Thank you, Mayor. To the board, I hope you're in support of this tonight. This does allow the voters in five years, the reauthorization of the fire and parks tax will come up at that time. This will join the police 1/8 cent tax and the potentially, the 5/8 cents street tax to come up for a single vote in 2030, and allow the public, or that board at the time, to see what they want to do, and let the public decide if they want to keep authorizing that. And I know what that board in the future will do, the, the public will trust them to do it. Over the past couple of weeks, this has all been about trust in 34 years. But I remember the citizens trusting the board to expand Lake Fort Smith. And we have a water supply bigger than we can imagine. But how did we do that? We issued bonds, and we paid the bond off with sales tax. That's what we're doing here. We're gonna do the work in 10 to 12 years on consent decree work, and we're gonna pay that off. No difference than when you buy a house and you pay it off for 30 years. No difference at all. The public has asked, this board can fix the consent decree. Get it done, get it out of our way. We have a solution in hand, costs no rate increase, no sales tax increase to the public. And what we can do is we can get this done with the money, bond it out, and pay the bond off. No difference than buying a house. Who's gonna hold us responsible besides the citizen committee? The citizens can. You can go buy bonds, once the bonds are issued. And you can go buy bonds and be a bondholder for the consent decree work. Go to financial institution and buy the bonds. That's, you're right, they're tax-free. Municipal bonds are tax-free. So you want to go make a little money? Invest in the city of Fort Smith consent decree municipal bonds, and you'll make a little money, because it's part of the bond issuance. That's who's gonna hold us responsible. The citizens are gonna hold us responsible, the committee, the citizens who hold this board, make sure we do it right. But we've been asked to solve the consent decree. So I think tonight does keep that promise that we said two years ago. It does, you know, the consent decree is solved. If, if the voters vote on it, we get that resolved in the next 10 to 12 years, and paid off, you know, as quick as possible. No new tax increase to take care of it. Thank you, Mayor.
Well said, thank you. Any other comments? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Directors George Kitzavas?
Excuse, we're voting on five, right?
Yes.
Correct.
Yes.
Christina Kitzavas?
Yes.
Settle?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Rego?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Approve, seven in favor and zero opposed.
Thank you very much. This time we'll go to the consent agenda.
There are, there are eight items on this evening's consent agenda. There's a resolution authorizing the annual Fortinet renewal contract. There's a resolution authorizing construction services agreement with Crawford Construction for Garrison Park revitalization. There's a resolution to discontinue mosquito fogging operations. Resolution authorizing application for CDS funding for the E991 PSAP equipment as revised, and there's a revised version placed on your, at your position this evening. There are three resolutions authorizing non-residential hauler permit with third-party hauler renewals. And there is a resolution authorizing purchase of a replacement tarp machine for landfill operations.
Okay. Any item to be pulled for separate discussion? Okay.
B, Mayor, for me.
B?
Yes, sir.
C? Any others? Okay. Let's talk about B.
Uh, B. That would be Sarah.
That'd be me. That'd be, that'd be me, or Joshua. Depending on what your question is.
I'd rather talk to Sarah.
It's a CBID project, it's not a parks project.
Not a parks project. We're looking at B?
Yeah, the park revitalization project.
That is, that is a CBID project. It's funded.
Okay, that's, wait a minute, that's not costing the city any money.
It's cost, well, it's costing about $8,000 from the utilities.
Well, come here, Josh. Come here, let's clarify this. Who's, tell me how's it being paid, this 85,000?
The total project's over 85,000.
Who's paying for it?
The CBID is paying 77,000 of it.
And the rest?
And the rest is coming from the city, from budgeted, from the parking garage, because that parking garage fund also takes care of the courtyard or the Garrison Park there in order to the parking garage. And we had money approved by the budget for landscaping, and so we're utilizing some of that money to facilitate the rest of the.
So we're paying, we're paying another eight, was it 8,000 approximately?
Yes, sir. It's 8,520 and 97 cents.
Cent, cents. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
And that, that allows us to go from the parking garage to Garrison Avenue, correct?
I'm sorry.
That allows us to go from the parking garage to Garrison Avenue, correct?
Yes, it will help with the walkability and also the art project that you see between the state building, and will kind of all connect that together. Okay.
Okay. Go to C.
Mayor, yeah, and I do have some questions, and then I would also like for C to be voted on separately.
Okay.
I guess my first question probably is for Matt Meeker. You know, we were, well, I guess the first question I have is how long have we been mosquito spraying in this manner?
I was looking back, and I had clerk's office, city clerk's office, doing some research, and I saw where we got some money, I think from the county back in '68 for some mosquito work, control work. So at least since, at least since then.
Okay.
Long before I was born.
Sure. And indeed before man walked on the moon. So I have a bit of a struggle with the notion that we're going to, you know, if this were to pass, sort of unilaterally stop taking action against adult mosquitoes that goes back a long time, number one. And I really just want to voice consternation and form a question. In the memo to us, you said there's significant public opposition to these operations of that, I have no doubt, although the definition of significant is probably one that can be discussed. And that there are concerns, quote, "that the chemicals used could be detrimental to the health and welfare of the public and city employees," which of course contrasts with the language that I'm sure has been up for quite some time on our website, that spraying is accomplished by mixing an EPA-approved chemical with mineral oil and fogging the mixture into the air. Nothing expressed, of course, about concerns to the health and welfare of the public or city employees. And so I guess my specific question is, which is one that, and it's the only one that you would be in a position to answer, to the best of your knowledge, has a city employee under your supervision ever filed any sort of medical claim or taken any sort of injury or been caused to be ill in a way that's directly provable by their work with the mosquito system?
No, but I have read research where there's a direct correlation between mineral oil and certain skin cancers. And that's well established. And that's, I mean, that's something we regularly use.
Director Christina Kitzavas?
So Matt, initially when we talked about this, you know, I didn't have a real strong opinion either way. I've heard from some of my neighbors. I live in an area that's real kind of heavily wooded, kind of in the May Branch area. We have a lot of flooding, we have a lot of standing water. Would it be possible to think about it, instead of doing the whole city and letting people opt out, to just let people opt in? Or do we have to buy those chemicals in such large batches that wouldn't be financially feasible?
Well, I mean, we buy them, but the stuff that we don't use, it doesn't necessarily go bad that quickly. I mean, we use it, you know, stuff we have left over, we use it the following year. So, I mean, we can continue to use what we have. I mean, that's something we can do, but.
Is it possible to run a program that way, where you're just letting people opt in instead of doing the whole city?
You can, but you're just going and spraying at their house, in like a house here and a house over there. And you got to be mindful, too, that we're doing this with seasonal staff and it's, you know, not full, not our regular full-time employees.
Okay.
It, I'm not, not trying to, I'm trying to figure out what I'm trying to say. Quality of work isn't always, with seasonals, isn't always.
I see.
What we see with a full-time employee.
Okay. My neighbors were concerned, so I told them I'd ask. I just wanted to see about that. Thank you.
Director Neil Martin, and then Director Rego.
Yeah, I called for this because I've gotten a lot of direct feedback of people not wanting this. And you mentioned last time your guy, your folks that are doing this get threatened with bodily harm.
We do from time to time, yes.
So I think that's important. But one thing that you did bring up that I thought was very interesting is you say you have some things at your disposal that potentially can help mitigate some of these things.
Yes, we've got the larva side pellets that we hand out to anybody that wants them and everything.
Right. I don't, I don't think people know this because I didn't know it until you said it. This is, this is it. And so you drop it into standing water, 25 yards of, or I can't remember what you said, the thing, but you drop it into water, standing water, and it will potentially eliminate mosquitoes in that area.
Yeah, one pellet is good for 25 square feet, for six inches of under of pooling or ponding, and it's got a different limit in there, and I don't remember what it is for deeper, but it's 25 square feet per pellet, and it's good for 60 days.
Does this, does this, is this also a part of the $78,000?
No.
Okay. I know that us at our house, you know, we will get our street sprayed, but we still have to go and purchase things on our own in order to be able to, you know, be able to be outside. So, you know, I question the effectiveness of it. And then I do question, you know, the health impacts. You mentioned the mineral oil, you know, the health impacts of it. And is it, is it truly, is it truly effective? This would be, I think, important for people to see and know about and, you know, get that, get that out there. But I do feel like this, it isn't worth the pain and the frustration, I think, that a number of people experience and you've, I've heard and you've, you've expressed to your team.
So, and once again, I'm going to throw out there, we, with the permethrin that we mix with our, the mineral oil, we actually mix it fairly weak because you can potentially overdose an area with it. And so there are certain limits in a season on how much you're supposed to have per acre that you dose an area with, and what those areas, what those limits are, I can't remember right off the top of my head right this second. But anyway, and considering you're using seasonal folks out there, and they may hit an area more than once or more often than they should, I mean, we're trying to account for that with a factor of safety by mixing it weaker anyway.
In mixing it, do you have to have some kind of special skill set or licensure?
No.
Okay.
No, you're just.
You just do it?
You're just pouring in mineral oil and pouring in so much permethrin.
All right.
Director Rego?
Thank you. And I think I want to dig a little deeper. I mean, first of all, cursory research on Google indicates that mineral oil is present as well in skin cream, ointment, lotion, sunscreen, lip care products, hair gels, bath oils. So that's just, I think, important for the record to reflect. I think that the opt-in notion is a very good one. And so what I want to drill in on is, you've made mention in the past of that people have the ability to opt out. What, how does that work? I mean, if, is it?
Not well.
One person can call and say, hey, I'd like to opt out, and then that decision is made for their whole neighborhood effectively? Or how does that work?
No, it's for their address. So we stop spraying, you know, on either, and start spraying on either side of their house when we come up to it, and that causes problems and issues. So because with drivers missing or forgetting that they've got to turn their sprayer off and then turn it, their fogger off and turn it back on, it's a constant problem. Then we get people calling and say, hey, you're not supposed to spray my house, but your driver passed at 2:30 and he fogged it, you know.
Sure. So I can appreciate that. So it's, it's a sort of, you take them as they come in and.
Yeah, and we don't eliminate the whole street because, I mean, there's, you'll have one street where somebody, one or two people don't want it, but you've got somebody down here that does, so.
Yeah. Well, you know, I appreciate the information you've shared with us, and I just think that, you know, we should be really thoughtful about making a change to something that's been in place for such a long time. And, you know, it's always harder to prove the negative, but, you know, I would just urge some caution on this. Thank you.
Director Good?
Thank you, Mayor. I was reminded in a couple of emails that I'd received over this, actually several through the years, you know, as we're addressing our water leak problems, you know, we don't have to just think about wooded areas or where there's ponds and streams. You know, we do have quite a few areas where we're still addressing water leaks, water trails, and tends to pond. You know, I've got a couple of citizens in southern states that aren't too keen on trying to fix their water leaks on their side of the meter. So the water ponds, runs down the street, it collects at the corner, so it affects the whole neighborhood. So opting in or out kind of doesn't really address some of these problems because we're not just talking about problems where there's ponds and wooded areas.
Director Kemp?
Well, I'm obviously on here as the second, so I'm in favor of this resolution. If it was passed and approved, these, this does require a special kind of truck, is that correct?
Yes.
So would the Streets Department, will you plan to hold on to that for a time? And, you know, we can see if this was the worst decision we ever made and we're overrun with mosquitoes and come to a certain point, I mean, can we not reinstate this?
I mean, we certainly can. I mean, if it is, it is approved, we certainly can hold on to the trucks if the board so desires for a certain amount of time.
Yeah, I mean, we have chemical, we have trucks. I personally would like to see a season without this. I know for me, I don't like to be sprayed or someone to be spraying something in the air while I'm sitting outside, and I've been on the phone, and then here comes the truck, and I'm like, oh my gosh, you know, and I'm trying to be out there on the phone, but I'm going inside. And so for me, I'd like to see a season with this. I think there are services where people can acquire this, and I think even then they've already had to, insupplemental to it. And so that's just a comment I want to make. I mean, perhaps you just hold on to the truck and the chemical, and let's see the results of this action. Thank you.
Director Neil Martin?
Just real quick, Matt, where, where would you get these? How would somebody get these?
You can call our office.
Call the Streets Department?
784-2360. And we can, and you can come by the office and pick them up, and we'll.
Okay, okay, very good. The other thing that I would like to see, I tried to find some mosquito-borne illness data, and I couldn't really find anything. I think that would be kind of interesting to see if there was any, any data that supported this at all.
I know there were, there were only, I think there were only two cases of West Nile virus in Arkansas last year, and none of them were around here. I don't know what it was for Zika virus, but.
Yeah, I mean, it'd be interesting to kind of see what that looked like. If we, if this passes and we vote to get rid of it, it'd be interesting to see if we now, we should have, we've got a baseline of what it is when we are spraying versus, you know, if we went a season without it or two. So I'm in favor of removing this, but it'd be interesting to see the data.
Okay, thank you. Director Rego, did you want to vote on a separate, which item did you vote on separately? Six C, okay. All right. Okay.
Motion to approve items six A, all consent agenda items except for six C.
Okay, second, need a second. Okay, any further discussion?
With six D as revised? As revised? Six?
Six D.
Six what?
Six D.
Six D.
Yeah, six D as revised as well. Do we have any citizens' comments on any of the items?
None indicating.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Directors Christina Kitzavas?
Yes.
Settle?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Rego?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
George Kitzavas?
Yes.
It's approved, seven in favor and zero opposed.
Okay, now we're going to vote on item C. I need a motion.
Uh, motion.
Okay. Second. Any further comments? If not, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Director Settle?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Rego?
No.
Good?
No.
Kemp?
Yes.
George Kitzavas?
Yes.
Christina Kitzavas?
You know, I'm going to abstain. I just don't think I have enough information to make an educated decision on this one.
The motion passes, four in favor, two opposed, and one abstention.
Thank you very much. With that, we will go to the official's forum. I don't have anything this evening. We'll go to Director Neil Martin.
Oh, perfect, thank you, Mayor. So one of the things, obviously we got the consent decree, sales tax, that's, or the reallocation that's in place right now. At the end of March, the city produced a, our annual report. I would like, I propose that we have a study session to specifically review the annual report as a board. We hear from our utilities director and the, and city administration regarding our performance in 2023, give an update to the citizens on progress, and just kind of talk through how we're, how we're looking at that. So I would like to do that in a future study session.
Okay, so noted. Director Settle?
Mayor, I'm sorry.
Is there a second?
Well, did I, did I make a motion? Oh, yeah, okay.
We need a second.
I'll second it.
Okay. Okay, Director Settle?
You know, Mayor, I had an opportunity to play at, my daughter had an opportunity to play Cabot this past weekend. And so when we talk about the sports complex in the future, I'll bring some pictures to the board about what I saw and things that was interesting when I was there at the thing. The last thing is, for the first time ever, Parrot Island Water Park will be open for Mother's Day. So they will be open this Saturday and Sunday, especially for mothers and Mother's Day. And they are going to have a lot of private parties for schools, getting out of schools, so elementary kids will be able to go to the Parrot Island this, next couple of weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Christina Kitzavas?
Jeff, have we done anything with figuring out the smell or what's going on with this building?
We have people trying to figure that out, yes. We, they're in and out of the building and in and out, upstairs and downstairs, and looking at various options regarding the sewer system, the drainage system downstairs, humidity in the basement. We have people chasing things, yes.
Where's the basement?
Below us. What does that guy do there?
I didn't know there was a basement.
This is the basement, yes.
Upstairs?
This is the upstairs. If you, if you.
So where's the access to the basement? That's what I'm asking.
The, there's an overhead door near the glass pavilion. If you go out the side here and go towards the back, there's, you'll see an overhead door and an entry door there. That goes into the basement, it's below the.
It runs into the whole building?
Yes.
Because I wasn't coughing today till I got here, and I've been coughing the whole time we've been here. I'm worried we've got mold or something.
Probably.
That's all, thank you.
One other note I'd like to make here, there's going to be a public meeting on, in Alma, on the awful smell that's been generated by Denali. So that's going to be on May 15th at 6:00 PM. And they don't give a location name, but it's going to be at, excuse me. It's going to be on Cullum Lane in Alma. And we'll, we'll search out the correct address, but there is going to be a public hearing on the smell situation. Okay. Director George?
Yes, Andy, you still here? Andy? Hey, Sherry, while he's coming up here, do you have the building list compiled, compelled yet? The empty buildings?
Yes, I think I'm just waiting on one department to respond back.
So maybe this week?
Hopefully, yes.
Okay. Andy?
Yes, sir.
I want to ask you a question concerning this vote coming up on the, on the sales tax. You know, I, you know, I've researched both sides, and to me, this is a lesser of two evils. You know, you, on one side, well, if you don't pass it, then you're looking at 40% increase. If it does pass, you know, you're not looking at an increase like that. The consensus in the public is it's 34 years. That's the first thing I hear, 34 years. Now, tell me something, if, let me give you an example. If, say, the EPA changes their mind and says, you know what, we're going to give you 20, If, say, the EPA changes their mind and says, you know what, we're going to give you 20, 30 more years, are we committed to that $380 million bond?
No, not necessarily. You're not. The reason being, first of all, you've got, you know, the plan is to issue the bonds in tranches.
In increments?
So, you know, like, the plan is to spend about $50 million a year for construction. Well, the first bond issue could be for 100 million.
Right.
We can be authorized to do, you know, this, this whole vote will give you the ability to authorize the, you know, 360, but we don't have to do it all at once.
Right.
So you can issue the first 100 million and then something happens, like you're saying.
So we get more time or another source of income?
Then you can, then you can, you don't have to issue the rest of the bonds.
Okay.
And if you, you know, you can, there's things you can do. I mean, you can, you know, eventually, you know, you can build call dates into these bonds. So if you do have the funds, you can call them early. Usually it's, usually the first call date is about 10 years in.
And when you say...
So you don't have to, so there isn't, you know, it's not a definitive, you know, that you have to, you know, and then once the bonds are paid off, then the sale, I mean, the sales taxes, you know, you can refer that back to the voters.
Okay, if this is turned down, then do we lose our street funding too? The streets tied into this, correct?
Yeah.
Our street department?
We would have to do, yeah, you would have to do something about the street funding if this gets voted down.
So we'd lose, we'd lose that 29 million it brings in, whatever.
I think Jeff's probably more into that than I am right now.
That would be correct.
So we'd lose, okay, then, so what happens then? Where is the Plan B?
We would have to consider what that is. This board would have to help us devise what Plan B is.
I think, well...
I mean, it's not, I mean, like you said when you started, it's not a, not a great option here. I mean, but we have an obligation.
No, it isn't. And the only thing, the only reason I'm, if this was a new tax, I'd say, no, hell no. But it is existing tax, which is a plus. But I'm not just happy with the terms that come with it. But that's up for the people to decide.
George, as I said earlier, it's like buying a house. You buy a house, you got a 30-year note. The bonds are going to be issued from either from 10 to 30 years.
Kevin, we've never took, we've never took a bond that long, as long as I've been on the board.
Yeah, we have. Lake Fort Smith was that long, George.
Well, that's before me.
But Lake Fort Smith was the same way. You issued bonds, you got all the money at the front, you built the lake and then we paid that off.
Yeah.
And then we, that was paid off and done.
Okay, in 2028, we have a bond that's going to be paid off, correct? Water and share every bond?
It'll be callable.
Or we're going to call it, right? Labon, you have anything to say?
You can refund, you can refinance that if you want to.
Well, I have one, one thing that I would like to add. You know, I think what's being left out of the conversation here is I think two things can be true. I think we can acknowledge that this consent decree is oppressive. The amount of money that's required put on the backs of our citizens with a median household income of $59,000 or a little less. But also have to acknowledge that while we're under it, we have got to move forward with work or they're going to start fining us and that's going to put us in a really bad position. So I think, you know, we talk a lot about getting out of it and the work that needs to be done. But I think, you know, we can also acknowledge that it's oppressive. But, you know, also, you know, I've made efforts, I've reached out to our representatives in Washington. I've reached out to anybody. I've tried. I can't even get a meeting with a low-level staffer. I mean, I have said, listen, I'll go to DC, I'll pay for it myself, I'll come meet with anyone that'll meet with me. No one will. And so, you know, I think that's something we need to think about. You know, when we talk to people, because these are questions people have, and I think sometimes people aren't hearing us because we're not acknowledging that we know this is a bad deal, but we're stuck with it.
Just a side note, I attended a mayor's summit in Fayetteville. And we had the Secretary of HUD there, I think his name is Scott Turner, and talked about housing. At the end of the meeting with Congressman, Congressman Womack did make mention of the fact that he's going to invite two other cabinet members to Arkansas. Those two cabinet members are the Secretary of Transportation and the EPA Administrator. Now, he didn't have any specific dates, but he said those were going to be to ask. And I've also made a request that he do come, that if he comes, that he does come to Fort Smith. So, and one other note, thanks for getting the address for the, for the meeting on the smell, dealing with Denali's issues over there in Van Buren. It's going to be at the Alma Community Center and that's 114 Cullum Lane in Alma, Arkansas. Anything else from you, Director George Katsavas?
Labon, you have anything to add to that?
Yes, thank you, Director George Katsavas, for asking me to comment. You know, and I'll say I agree with everything that was said.
Well, we do have options when it comes to bonds. We're not stuck.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. And as Mr. Richards said, we're going to issue these bonds in saving, in stages for two reasons. We're going to, issuing in the stages saves a lot of interest.
Right.
Because if you delay the issuance, you're not paying interest. Also, it allows that if we get federal money or state money, or if we get 30 years, then we can, we can do this as a pay-as-you-go, which is much preferable, rather than issuing the rest of those bonds. So we issued 100 million to get started and maybe if we're lucky, if we're fortunate and some of these conversations that we're going to have turn out to, turn out to be helpful, we maybe never have to issue any more bonds and as Mr. Richards said, they can be called early. And the, the bonds, the second part of this whole program was, you're correct, Mr. Katsavas, that there are some bonds that we can call in 2028 and then refinance for the second half of the money that we need for this. But the big thing is, as you said again, no, there's no tax increase in here and there's no sewer rate increase. And I would also say something that we've talked about. There's a long list of really bad options on this. None of them are any good. This happens to be the best of a long list of bad options. And that's truly unfortunate for the people of Fort Smith and for all of you. So that's my comment.
Okay, thank you. I'm done there. Thank you.
Let me finish and then we'll circle.
It was specific to...
You want to relate to that?
It was specific to that. The other bad option for that, Director Katsavas, is a 15 and a half percent rate increase this year.
On water, sir?
Sewer, 15%.
Well, we're doing a three and a half next month.
That's what the EPA is going to require.
This is the EPA's alternative. 15 and a half percent, 15%, 14%, 13%, 10%, 8%, 6%, 4%, 4%, 3%, 3%, 2% through 2036. That's for a total of 152.2%.
That's unsustainable to people.
I agree. That's, that's, that's why...
I mean, that would, that bankrupt people.
With what Director Morton said, this is the better of a bunch of bad options. That's a bad option.
Yeah.
And that's what I can't, I can't look at the citizens in the eye and say, yep, okay, 15% next year. Can't do it. Can't do it.
Well, it's like, it's like we have a gun to our head, basically.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's, that's what, so I was, I was on the call in April, or excuse me, in August. I was the director on call. And it was, this, they, they said, this is your option. And then that's when we presented, ultimately, we, out of that meeting, we presented the financial plan that is ultimately up for a vote this week. But that was their plan. And, I mean, it's unsustainable.
Here's one, my last question, why, how come Michigan got 40 years to complete their consent decree and we didn't? Kevin, you looked into that.
Are you talking about Flint, Michigan?
Yeah.
Unfortunately, George...
Because they're a democratic state?
I want to, I want to be more nicer about this. Congress looks at more water than they do sewer. Because water is the headlines, sewer is not. And I will say this, we're getting ahead of this now. Other cities are going to be hitting this sooner. There are going to be cities hitting this. Big cities in Arkansas, big cities in Texas are going to have the same problem. I talked to my brother, he has a $95 sewer bill in Phoenix, Arizona, per month. That's Phoenix. So that tells you other cities are paying astronomical fees in other big cities.
Yeah, I'm sure their median income is a lot higher than we are.
You'd be surprised, it's not on the outskirts where that's it. So it's crazy. But George, it's, this was back to the negotiations back to 2015 and who was there and that's what it's about.
Okay, I'll take one more time.
In our last meeting with them, which was held recently, I got a sense that they are, that we could wrap this up, this consent decree up, if we pass this initiative.
But will we still be open to, for negotiations? Or just for, to get more time, maybe?
I think all of that will come into play. Their question was, if you do not pass this, what do you do then?
Mayor, we've made good faith effort to complete this.
And we have. I agree 100%.
And we spent a lot of money.
And I agree 100%.
They, when I was on there, they disagreed. They wanted us to make more effort.
The meeting I sat in on, they disagreed as well. They were saying, you told us you could do 10 and a half miles of pipe a year, you've only done six miles.
Well, this was under Biden's administration, right?
Yes, last year was my turn and they were frustrated. But I feel like we've come here, just about every meeting I've been here, and we have voted on consent decree projects, but they're wanting to see an accelerated rate of work.
Mayor, may I?
Yes.
Given the topic that we're talking about, I was the board representative on the call late last week and I just have to say, number one, you know, the staff and the mayor that participated, you know, vocally on the call and our councils as well, you know, did a very, very good job advocating for our community. And I would say, you know, the sense, the very strong sense that I received is that obviously they want to see a successful passage of the vote next week because the plan that we've put forward for consideration is something that they think is very feasible. They think it's something that would, they were very clear in the notion that that would, a successful passage would lead to a successful extension. And they were very encouraged ultimately by the final tally of the work, the actual physical work that was done in 2024 and what we plan to do if we're able to access the funding with a, you know, successful passage vote next Tuesday. And so I would say, and of course, you know, folks that participated are, you know, free to add their observations as well, but I thought it was a very productive and very positive call. And I think that it's important to keep that momentum going and, you know, I hope that people participate in the election next week.
Thank you. This time we'll go to Director Kemp and then Director Good.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate Director Rigo recapping that. I wanted to make sure, as I had mentioned at the onset of this meeting, that we did go over that and I appreciate him giving the information that he has from that. The two other points I wanted to make on that, and then I'm done for the night myself, is that we need the money approved to negotiate either way. Be it through bonds or be it through a pay-as-you-go method, we need the funding. The funding needs to be approved either way, which my last comment would be that I would say, hopefully, pending a successful vote and approval by the citizens of Fort Smith to put us to work. I think the next directive we should be doing is proposing a meeting where we go to meet Scott Mason in Dallas. I think it's time to fly above those that are in these negotiation meetings and continue to pressure some of the top-tier leadership of these, both of these institutions or agencies to help us. And we've had good conversations. I know Director Christina Katsavas and I were in DC. We sat there and talked to both Cotton and Bozeman and Womack at different points of time because we weren't working from two different angles of that trip. And then we have talked to Tim Griffin, Griffith in the state of Arkansas with Leslie Rutledge. And all those people have connections to the top. And I think, once this is approved, I think the next move is to try to go negotiate with better, longer terms. But we need the money either way. So, thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, prior to Director Good talking, Mr. Canfield had something he wanted to add about the meeting last week.
Yes, Mr. Canfield, you recognize.
I would just affirm what Director Rigo said about the conversation last week. The city has put forth a proposal to have money to not do all of the work on a pay-as-you-go basis. One of the big issues for the agency is to get the work done in order to have benefit from getting the work done. And that, of course, takes funding. And the bond issue or the possibility of the bond issues that would come from reallocating a portion of the street tax makes that possible. And for the first time in the last three or four years of negotiations, the agency was very clear that the agency itself would recommend a 10-year extension over, in addition to the two years that are available. So for the first time I've heard, you know, they've struggled even with the five years that was negotiated into the consent decree. But for the first time, I've heard a commitment from the agency itself, subject, of course, to approval at the top, for a 10-year extension to go with the two years that we already have. And so to me, there's been a significant change in the position of the agency and I think it's directly attributable to the plan that the city has put together to have a mechanism to fund the improvements and not wait till the end of the period to get all things done.
Thank you. Director Good?
We have no comments myself, but I do want to thank Director Rigo for speaking up on, sitting in on the meeting as well as others. Thank you to our attorney as well. But because we heard from these individuals, I'd also like to hear just a little bit of information, some feedback from Lance McAvoy, who is the respected and recognized point of contact to these state agencies.
Just sort of his impression of the meeting?
Yes, absolutely. Yes, I concur. I actually had a follow-up conversation with one of the gentlemen on EPA. During the meeting, they had asked for some additional technical information that even during the conversation, both our legal team and the Department of Justice kind of said, we need to get out of the way so that the technical people can do what they need to do. And, you know, we're, we're in May of this year. We've got about a year and a half left before the consent decree, under its current guidelines expires, additional 10 years. Really, with the work that we've done, it is, is going to be very helpful to get that finished. Not to give a spoiler alert to what Director Morton had asked, but kind of put things in perspective with what we have completed that we know, and this is linear feet and manholes. So linear feet and manholes only and not capacity projects. Right now, at the end of '24, we've completed 23% of the line work that has to be done. So you think about it, we're at year 10 roughly and we've got 23% done. However, with what we have under contract from the sales and use tax that we've been using, by the end of this year, we'll be at 33%. Manholes, we're at 32%. By the end of this year, we should be around 40% of the work being completed. So additional time is very important, but it was made very, very clear that we do need to have a financial plan. And that's what Director Christina Katsavas and Director Neil Martin heard during theirs when it was somewhat contentious. And I agree with, with how you summed up that meeting. It was very contentious. This one, when they actually saw where we're at, what the plan is, they are very hopeful. And in my talks with the gentleman from EPA, he, they're basically needing to know that what we have left is 500, that's not under contract. It's either under design or needs to be designed in contract. They need to know that we had 521,400, or 148 linear feet left. They needed to know that we had 2,655 manholes left to rehab or replace. And that's important to them because that's how they are going to put in the affordability in the matrix on the time that they then come back and propose. So they may give more time, but to Mr. Canfield's point, the fact that they brought up the 10-year extension and how that plays out and then looking at this, they may come back with some more. I can't speak for them. But it was very, very promising for me to hear them actually basically say, you're doing a good job. We just need to know how you're going to, they don't want it in-loaded, they want it front-loaded a little bit, how we're going to spread that work out over time. And we've actually have plans on when this is approved for those projects that are under design, how to get those mirrored up to the bonds being issued and being able to get projects going as soon as possible.
Thank you, sir, Mayor. Lance, so you're saying in the last 10 years, we've only completed 23% of the consent decree work?
Through the end of '24, yes. Through the end of twenty-four, yes, of the linear feet.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, because I heard that, that's not entirely true. Because there's all this pre-work that you have to do ahead of that. So could you go into that? Because I don't want people thinking, oh, ten years, thirty percent.
Yeah, thank you so much for that, and, and thank you. We have to assess the lines to find out how many fours and fives are there.
Yeah.
We're a hundred percent done with the assessment.
Okay.
So we know-
For the whole city?
For the whole, for everything that was required in the initial assessment.
And that was over a period of years?
Yes, that started in fifteen and we ended that at the end of twenty-four.
Okay, so.
And we were behind schedule on, on that, but it was because of COVID and the two years. Well, we actually got it finished, the assessment was not delayed due to the flood, but COVID delayed it by two years because we, we were doing it in-house because we couldn't get people in.
But that's, that's, that's the point to, you don't just start work on it. You have to, the, the consent decree said, you got to assess everything. Then you have to go plan it, design it, do the work, all that kind of stuff.
Yes.
And that's what's taking additional time.
Correct. So of that, that twenty-three percent, that's what's constructed. Of the stuff that we found that needs to be constructed, we've, we've got that done.
If this, if this bond issue passes, can you assure this board that, that the work will be done in twelve years? The consent decree work will be done in twelve years? Since the money's not going to be an object, seems like.
Well, I mean, it's, it's a large portion would be funded through that, and we're going to try to, you know, value engineer where we can. As Director Sutter will tell you, CIPP is cheaper than open cut. Pipe bursting is cheaper than open cut. And where we can do those things, we'll do that to make, to get as much linear feet, but we also still have capacity projects. So, you know, you've talked about three hundred and sixty to three hundred and eighty million dollars in bonds, but we're still looking at roughly six hundred and fifty, six eighty million today's dollars to get done.
As I've said before in every presentation, the second part of this is to refinance the 2018 bonds. We can call those in 2030, and that's been in the plan all the time. Our financial experts have looked at that. The bond lawyers have looked at that and said, that is a viable option. By that time, those 2018 bonds would be paid down to seventy million dollars. We're paying on those bonds seventeen million dollars a year now. So we will have a lot of money to, to fund a refinancing of bonds that we are already spending every year right now.
And that would not add to-
It would not add to what?
Sales tax or rates?
That's right. No, it would not add to the sales tax, it would not add to the rates. So that's the second part of the plan that makes up the second three hundred million dollars to get to the six hundred million dollars. We didn't, we didn't get to three sixty and stop. We said, we got to have six hundred million, and that's what the plan is designed to, to come up with.
So where, where did the eight hundred million dollars come from? I heard eight hundred, nine hundred and fifty million?
Well, it's two hundred we spent plus six hundred to go, right? So we've spent two hundred million, right, at this point? So it's two hundred already and six hundred to go, that's eight hundred.
Right, but you got, that's not factoring inflation though for the next twelve years, is it? I mean, that's going to play a part in it.
Well, you can comment on that.
Levon, while you're up here, I have a clarification or question. So the debt service for 2024 was nineteen million, six hundred, sixty-seven thousand, three hundred dollars. Eleven million, one hundred and sixty thousand was principal. Eight million, four hundred, seventy-seven thousand, three hundred represents the interest for twenty-four.
Three, three bond issues in that. There's a 2015 bond issue, pretty small amount left. 2016 bond issue, pretty small amount left. Those, those mature, one in, one in thirty-two and maybe one a few years later. But they're small amounts, so that's why I said about sixteen or seventeen million of the nineteen million goes for this really big issue that we made in 2018. And the way it's structured, as soon as all those pay off, the payments for that one jump back, jump higher than they, than, than they are now. They go up to the full nineteen million. Eventually, we'll be paying the full nineteen million on the 2018 bonds. That's the way it's structured.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
To, to answer your question, we'd be looking at doing about fifty thousand linear feet a year and, and more than that in manholes. In twenty-four, again, not to go into a study session, we did just shy of that. We did forty-five thousand, two hundred and seventy linear feet of pipe, and we did five hundred and twenty-three manholes in twenty-four. This year, we're looking at seventy-seven thousand, one hundred and sixty-two linear feet and three hundred and sixty-seven manholes.
A linear foot, a foot is how long?
I'm sorry, what?
A linear foot is how long?
One foot. So, so take whatever, if, if you're-
I only went to college seven years, I'm sorry.
Yeah, sorry.
So a linear foot is one foot?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. I'll, I'll say this, I'll say this.
What?
We need this information in a graphical form. Certain percentages of this complete, this complete, this complete. I think that's going to be much easier for people to understand than instead of reading a hundred and thirty-page document that you put out there.
Yes, and I will tell you that administration has instructed Mr. Buchink and me to meet this Friday to begin working on that, to get that information out.
People need to easily see what the progress is.
Yes, I agree. But to answer your question, is it obtainable in that timeframe? Yes.
Thank you, Lance.
Mr. Mayor, I believe my turn is next, and I do not have any further items to add. And I would encourage us to keep proceeding.
Director Neil Martin had something.
Oh, I think that, I, I get it in, Mayor, I've, I've already got it in, so.
You got, you got it in.
Motion to adjourn. I'm sorry.
Just, just a few things. A reminder for next week's study session, it will, on May the thirteenth, will be held at the fire station number eleven at eighty-nine hundred Mazard Road.
At a chappy?
Yes, sir, chappy.
The new, the new?
Yes, Fire Station eleven.
Okay.
And, and that'll be at six PM on next Tuesday, May the thirteenth. Just a reminder that on the election, the early voting started today. It happens eight to five through, through Friday, and also will happen on Monday, eight to five, at the, the older county courthouse, room G eight, there on the ground floor. And then, of course, the special election itself, on May the thirteenth, the polls are open from seven-thirty AM to seven-thirty PM.
Okay, if there's nothing further?
Yeah, all polling places will be seven-thirty to seven-thirty.
Are the all polling places open for the early voting?
No, just the Sebastian County courthouse for early voting.
All right, okay, thank you. Motion to adjourn? Thank you all in favor?